Conversation with city council leaders. I have the pleasure of introducing next panel in that regard. Please welcome Gail Brewer and Amanda Farias are city council members in conversation with Brian Paschus of Cranes, New York Business. Please give them a round of applause. These are true champions, people's champs. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Thank you, council members. So let's get into it. If we could, can you generally give us the details of how the city council is promoting job growth and access to opportunity in wake of the pandemic? And specifically, how is the council promoting an inclusive economic recovery that reaches those individuals and communities that have historically been locked out of opportunity? Councilwoman Brewer?
Thank you very much. There are a couple of ways. First of all, with Councilmember Farias, I just want to talk about a hearing that we did that I think addresses this, which is while we're making the communities inclusive and we're making sure, for instance, in my case, I am very concerned about the nonprofit sector maintaining and hiring. The city of New York, this is what our hearing was about, is way down on maintaining staff and making sure that they hire staff. And that's what I think has to be addressed because in order for affordable housing to be built, that to me is our number one issue. You have to have people at HPD who are in the low income tax credit office or other offices. In order for the daycare center to open, you have to have an inspector from the fire department show up on a timely basis. So we had a hearing without getting into all the specifics. It's in our briefing paper. There was very few because of the salary issues and because, Mr. Mayor, I will be honest, we understand that you want to have everybody back at work. But if you have everybody back at work and you don't have at least some flexibility on virtual, then I'm afraid people are not going to come work for the city of New York.
Councilwoman Farias, do you want to talk about the inclusive economic recovery, those specifics?
Sure. I mean, what I did want to add on is I think budgetarily, we've also been hyper focused on finding ways to support nonprofit organizations and different opportunities and initiatives that we have in our local government where we can best utilize putting people into the pipeline creation that we desperately need to ensure that our workplaces are hiring people that look like our communities, that are reflective of our communities and also are as inclusive as possible. I think two examples policy wise outside of the oversight that Councilmember Brewer and I have been doing is like Intro 179A, which passed. It's a bill that requires more in non-traditional careers in an industry. How logging of that so we can see who's hiring that workforce, where are they being placed, where there's dearth of employment? Things like that are critical to making sure that we are looking at our city and being reflective on where we can fill those gaps or where there's maybe like a lack of interest or appetite in fields that maybe need bolstering and support or maybe need some retraining or upskilling to move people into an industry that is either close to those skill sets that those folks have or emerging in our city.
Great. Thank you. Let's get into some more specifics here, though. Mayor Adams initially tried to have a $98.5 billion budget. He's called himself the austerity mayor. And we just had a recent report from the state comptroller's office that said by fiscal year 2026, the city can have a $10 billion deficit. Is the city council prepared to do more with less? And are there going to be funds available to create a sustainable and long-term workforce development program?
Well, I mean, we're both on the budget negotiation team. I'm part of the kitchen cabinet. I'm on finance. This is my second tour of duty on the city council. And I've been on budget negotiation teams for that entire time. I would say two things. In the past, we have also dealt with budget challenges. 2008, I was in the city council. What we don't want to do is increase taxes. I have to say, I know that people are thinking that's one way. That's not how I would handle it. I always think, the mayor talked about the 3% peg that you've heard about. I think as budget negotiation, we're going to go through every aspect of the budget. At Department of Education, we cannot get the data. Just as you, as an example, they have a 30-some billion dollar budget, DOE, DYCD, HRA, Parks Department, of course, SBS, et cetera. There are 21 agencies that deal with workforce development. So the first show, and I know that to the credit of Jose Ortiz Jr., he's working on this, is how in the world do you streamline the 21 agencies working on workforce development? That makes no sense. And the second, my jewel is always the City University of New York and the community colleges. Where should the funding go? It should go to CUNY that then would align themselves with the businesses, whether it's tech, life science, healthcare, et cetera, that are the emerging industries. And then finally, on the nonprofit sector, which we care so much about, mental health. You hear about it. It's a challenge. They're losing, they can't hire because the salaries are so low and they can't maintain because the salaries are so low. So the question then is, how do you make sure that the alignment of the 21 agencies is streamlined, CUNY is training, and this nonprofit sector does some peer-to-peer work? Because you may not be able to hire MSWs in every single case, but you sure as hell can hire peer-to-peer, train them with CUNY or other support mechanisms and make sure that the nonprofit sector and the 21 agencies that are doing workforce development are aligned. We have got to figure out how to deal with those who need the support the most and make sure the businesses, EDC does a great job as an example of a solution. There's a program that takes young people from colleges or grad school or even high school and works with them as an internship paid in a business that's emerging. These kinds of programs are what we're looking for. Those are the solutions.
Yeah. And just to add on, round of applause. I do think there, I mean, that's exactly it, right? We've seen other cities that are, have smaller capacities than ours, other municipalities that are doing things like career-wise, that are taking young people, building public-private partnerships, working with unions, working with municipalities and moving them through a pipeline of internship to apprenticeship model or registered apprenticeship to a job. It's happening in other cities. We really need to figure out ourselves how we can get a grasp on that. I think on the other side of this, and something that deserves some highlight, is we have great partners and at the state and federal level, right? One of the examples I immediately think about is the Hunts Point Terminal Produce Market in the South Bronx, right? We have a gap of funding that's necessary. Right now, the federal government filled part of that gap with $110 million, you know, through the work of people like myself on the ground, Councilmember Salamanca, Congressman Richie Torres, Senator Chuck Schumer, right? People that are really pushing where we know there are funds that can be utilized on the ground in our backyards to bolster up workforce, to bolster up investments in the locality. And I think the more pressure we put on using those state and federal actors, those, the people around us that can be supportive, the more we can actually fill those gaps and push back a little bit more against austerity.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Let's talk about a subject that's on everybody's mind, rent. The average Manhattan apartment, one bedroom.
It's too damn high.
Was. You took the, you took the words right out of my mouth. We just, a July report.
I borrow.
A July report found the average one-bedroom rent in Manhattan was $5,100. Street Easy just published a report that found the gap between wages and housing costs is the largest it's been since 2008. And if you could just hear the audience, everyone's a guest. What, if anything, can the city council do about this? And how do we prioritize job growth for a workforce where many people are rent burdened?
Yeah. I do, when I hear talk about like job growth or maybe even just like wage disparities, there's a lot of things that the city council, particularly right now, where the city is looking at how to lessen that gap, right? We just passed 179A, which focuses on lessening the wage gap in vocation and trades. And then we have 134A that earlier this year where we're kind of, in a polite way, forced private businesses to say, if you're going to hire people in New York City, we're going to make you show the salary ranges because we know our people deserve to apply and get jobs that are worth their value and their skill set. And so I do think when we're looking at how we can policy-wise assist in lessening the wage gap, increasing wages, or even just being more transparent in what all of us in this room can apply for or deserve to apply for, it's bills like that, it's policies like that that help do that. And then I think we really have to look at development in the city and what it means to answer for the housing crisis and what that means for our communities, not obviously completely shifting what our communities currently look like, but really being intentional and deliberate on when we're building affordable and how we push for housing that can solve the needs that we have, that we've had for decades past, right now in the city.
Well, getting the rent down is something that we would love to do, but while we're trying to do that, there are three ways that the least people could apply for housing, the short numbers that there are. I mentioned that the city needs to have more people at Department of Buildings and HPD and Fire and so on to get these buildings built, number one. Number two, even applying on this Housing Connect, you need to be a genius to figure out all of the friggin paperwork. And that needs to be streamlined and changed because guess who's getting it are people who are more adept at doing that and those are not necessarily the people who need the housing. So there is apparently a group of people streamlining that. And at the same time, we do need, I know you talked about the budget gap, but the issue is we need more attorneys at Legal Aid and so on to be able to address anybody who is getting, in my opinion, illegally told that they have to leave their apartments. At the same time, there's a push to have the courts on the state level slow down their process so that the attorneys and the tenants can work together. And then we have to figure out this real challenge of affordable housing and lack thereof. We know that the asylum are here and, you know, close to 20,000 so far with many more to join us. And we have absolutely no place to put such numbers, not to mention those who are already in shelters. So the homeless issue is a huge challenge. I would say, you know, developers, with all due respect, could work much more closely with the city in terms of realizing that we have a huge, too expensive a city problem and poverty and we no longer are building the middle class. So we need a Mitchell Lama program that was, existed many years ago, that was the best middle-class housing program that we ever had. I know that's a state level, but it needs to be, and also single-room occupancies. Those were the places where individuals who didn't have a lot of funding, but you had a solid building with the kinds of support that are needed, supportive housing. Those are not great answers, but that, at the very least, we should be doing.
Councilwoman Farias, you're chair of the Economic Development Committee. It's your specialty. We know we're seeing retirements rates rise in public safety, NYPD, FDNY, home care, healthcare, but we're also seeing more hiring in the tech sector, the life sciences sector. What can we do to stoke the flame of these industries that have room for growth? And how do we prepare for the fault lines in these industries where we're seeing people retire?
Yeah. Thank you for this question. This is one of my favorite things to talk about, and I just want to preference Chair of Economic Development Committee for the last 10 months. So expertise is like, you know, we're going to be nice, but we're all experts in this room. Really, I think for me, this, the way a lot of us in the conversations I've been having, have been trying to focus on this is saying, how are we looking at dearth of employment where it's happening and not actually looking at those workers and saying, you either have to stay in this field or completely change your career? We're really looking at ways that we can use nonprofit organizations, CBOs, folks like NYCETC, whom can upskill people into the fields that are emerging. So we, you know, we have sectors right now in vocation and trades and I'll give like a big nation one, like not necessarily impacting New York, but we look at coal miners, right? The people that we know we're trying to move out, we have big goal, climate goals. How are we taking those workers and upskilling them in? Or even, you know, an average person, a worker that's working in transportation and logistics right now, or the gig economy. There are plenty of sectors that are emerging that we're not actually taking folks and saying, you're in this job right now that has, and you check off seven credentials, but this title, that's one, you know, this emerging industry that's coming in, all you're missing is two credentials to move into that, that has a higher wage, has benefits, has a union, et cetera. And I think that is really part of that streamline, that pipeline that we need to start focusing on and creating here is giving people the upskilled opportunity. And we have groups across the city that are doing this every single day, but really tapping into them, giving them the money they need to find the folks that need that training and move them in. And then I think ultimately, like we, there are places that need really investment for recovery. Hotel industry is one of them right now that both is impacting non-union and union workers. And I know we hear a talking point of 90% occupancy right now in hotels, but those are hotels that are open, that's not impacting the hotels that are closed, that's not impacting the hotels that are up for conversion. And so really, if we're going to focus on getting people back to work and we're going to ensure that we're not widening the gap of unemployment, it's finding ways to invest in industries to get workers back in their jobs and upskilling workers into new emerging industries.
I just want to add, if you don't mind, I'm a big fan of Ken Adams, who is the head of LaGuardia Community College. And what he's doing, we need nurses, we need plumbers, we need electricians, we need many of the trades, hopefully to go into the unions. So what he's doing, as I understand it, is he is saying to an individual, you can come to LaGuardia Community College, we'll help you get your GED, you don't need college to be any one of these very needed professions. And we will train you with the correct credentials that you just heard about and we'll give you six credits at LaGuardia Community College, which means that they will come back to LaGuardia Community College to finish. So innovative ideas like that need to be on a much broader scale for the city of New York. I keep going back to the City College and CUNY and the fact that these professions are desperate. We're desperate for nurses, plumbers, electrician, and so many others, but we're not doing the type of easy access and support. And it's privately funded, it's not costing the city anything, but it's the kind of program that government should pay for across the, across the board.
The Summer Youth Employment Program, it just had over 100,000 participants this summer. Speaker Adams recently said that she'd like to see it expand to a year-round youth employment program and it would become one that would partners with the private sector. Councilwoman Brewer, how does the city make that happen and who do we partner with?
Well, certainly, I agree, we had a Summer Youth Employment Program, a young woman, and we hired her. So that's what happens when you have SYEP in your workplace. So I do think it should be year-round, obviously maybe not at the same scale because people are back in school. It's going back to this issue of what are your priorities? So you have a budget gap. So what are the priorities? I think we agree, workforce, housing, those are the top priorities for me, anyway. So it would seem to me that whether it's JP Morgan and the great work that Barbara Chang is doing, figuring out which agencies will work with us as they are during the summer, there's no question, SYEP equals jobs. So if you are having that same experience during the summer that I just described, then it makes perfect sense to do year-round and it's a wonderful public-private partnership. You can't get the private sector to participate in everything, but they do understand that we need a workforce for the future because it's to their benefit. So yes, all year-round, and it's a kind of streamlining that would make perfect sense.
Do you have anything?
No, I just think that, you know, we lose, we're losing workers as early as fifth grade. The moment we do not tap into interests of young people and really building on those interests into skill sets, skills sets and skill sets into internships or fellowships and into jobs or into college and career, you know, that's how we end up with this massive unemployment or people going to CUNY for one year and then dropping out because they haven't figured out what they'd like to do or they can't continue on their education. So investing in young people is really at the core of what we need to be focusing on in workforce.
Let's stay on that topic because we just talked about the unemployment. 18 to 24-year-olds have a 21% unemployment rate right now. So where does education fit into workforce development? Are we teaching our kids the right, you know, subjects in school? Are they, are they having the right classes to prepare themselves for the 21st century economy? And, you know, what, how can the city help prioritize what young people learn as they prepare to enter the economy?
Well, we're back to the CTE question, which is the program's career and technical education. For years, decades, the city has not invested in aviation, automation, food and finance, and the list goes on. If you go to food and finance, which is a school I know well, you absolutely get a job in the culinary industry or you go on to Cornell or you go on to other colleges that teach culinary. Hotels, culinary jobs needed. You don't need to be a genius in any way to know that there's, where their jobs there. So the city has not done that. Now, the mayor to his credit and the chancellor have said this is a priority. It is one of those 21 agencies that needs to be streamlined because you need to work with EDC, you need to work with the other agencies. So I think the answer to my, to your question is two things. Don't put kids who are not interested in culinary at food and finance. We have somewhat stopped that. And make sure that when you graduate from aviation, there's relationship with the port authority and the airports. You get the picture. It sounds so easy, but it has not happened in the past. So let's hold the administration to their promise that CTE is going to be much better funded, aligned with the agencies, and we will have people who are interested and follow up on those jobs.
Yeah. I mean, that's exactly it. We, we are not doing our job in saying, you are in junior high school or middle school and you didn't get your first or second choice, so you're just going to go to AE Smith and figure it out by the time you get to college. It's like, no, you did really great in math and science or you really enjoyed that woodworking class and here's the next step in. We're not doing that at the career and technical education level. We're not investing enough to have the young people that actually are good at, like not me, I'm not good at math or science. Like, it's good that I'm here, right? But like my brother, for example, college was not his thing. He wasn't an academic, but he can tell me the size of my wall by looking at it, right? He can make a really great estimate. He's good at math and science and like right now, he's in an apprenticeship for plumbing. So like that is like a thing that he's interested in, but we are not finding the investments early enough. And realistically, without those, we won't be, like, we won't actually solve the larger problems. So it's, it's up to us to really make, make those investments early.
So let's stay on this theme of, of investments and preparation, but let's go a little bit further and think about how do we better prepare our current workers, you know, our existing workforce, the people who are, you know, between ages, you know, 30 and 55 and 60 for the changes in the new trends?
I'm older than that.
I did not know. So how do we prepare these workers for changes to the 21st century economy? And should the city council establish a permanent workforce development program or fund, you know?
Yeah. I mean, yes, right? Yes, we should. I think we're in a really unique opportunity right now to see the Office of Workforce Development or Task Force Pipeline, it's a long name. We have really good people on at least the mayor's side that I think are working on trying to streamline that and figure out how to get these 21 agencies in and not looking at maybe the empty vacancies right now and saying, we don't need those people, but finding the people within our city or within our neighborhoods to move them into those titles. But I do think that, I know we've spoken a lot about investing in young people, but we, we obviously need to find like adult training, older adult training is important to keeping the workforce alive and keeping that going. So, yeah, I mean, I just think that where we're looking at different sectors and different fields and we should, we should really be looking at data on why people are leaving or why people are not going into those areas and putting the dollars behind that to move them in. I mean, I can't say upskilling enough, right? That is really in, in direct relationship to investing in young people, how we keep people working and how we move them in through, through the sectors.
Yes, I agree. I mean, there's so many ancillary support mechanisms to keep people in, obviously education, so making CUNY available in the way that I just described, which would be free, if I would suggest that, for those who are improving their courses. Number two, language. You can't imagine how many nonprofits are absolutely backlogged in terms of teaching language so that people can do better in their, whatever job they're working in. And then you just have to keep working with the industry. We still seem to have some kind of a disconnect between life sciences when you need to make it more diverse or technology to make it more diverse, you need to make sure those who are there are supported, but also to bring in more. And it goes back to, you know, the group that I, the project that I just mentioned at Economic Development Corporation where they're taking in people who are diverse to bring them into the industry. It just, what we have is great, you just need more of everything. And that does require funding. That does require funding, but it has to be, if that's your priority, then that's what you need to work on and it's certainly our priority.
Can I just lastly say, we also have so many groups that, so many organizations and training systems throughout the city that their program, their training, their initiative is, has great retention, has really great reporting data, has like, you know, 90% of people get a job or 80-something percent of people get a job afterward, enter place and two years after are still within that title or that job. And those systems are so replicable, but we are not sharing that information across the board either sometimes. Like, I speak to organizations and I'm like, how do you have this great data set and we're not doing this citywide? And it's like, well, we kind of trying to serve citywide, but they have such a small amount of funding that can only do, you know, 50 people at a time or 100 people at a time. We, along with the funding, we also need to be better at finding the people we need to uplift and champion and say, this system is replicable? How do we scale this up to really encourage and bolster up the workforce too?
We're very serious at the city council and doing the oversight to make some of this happen. So it's the workforce committee or oversight or both as head of investigations and oversight. We're committed to doing that.
Okay. Thank you, Claudia. So to the most common words on everyone's lips when we discuss jobs, workforce development, the economy are childcare. We constantly are hearing about childcare. Yesterday, the city council passed a seven-bill package to improve access to childcare in this city, including setting the foundation for universal childcare. My first question is, why has this taken so long for the city council to prioritize childcare for working parents? Please tell us.
Male leadership.
My initial thought.
So we have our.
Apologetic about that at all.
Not apologetic.
We have our answer to that question. But maybe more like a little deeper, what? What steps need to be taken in the years ahead to actually improve access, to go beyond just a task force to study something and make recommendations? How do we actually get there to universal childcare?
I'm like a broken record, but the package is great. It's, you know, but it doesn't say exactly how we're going to get there. It says we should get there. And the way that we get there is it's part of the priorities. So let me give you an example. So agencies have got to work with a situation when there is a childcare center and not take it six months to open because the agencies together can't figure out how to do the right inspections. That has to start. So even when you have a center, it's hard to get it open when there's been a challenge in the past or when you're brand new. So that's number one. Number two, we have to figure out with the mayor, hopefully keeping what I call de Blasio's premier work, which is the pre-K and those that are three-year-olds. So both of them need to remain. They were funded by the federal government, so we do need to find the money. And that's a challenge, but I want to let you know, it's also part of the, part of the childcare. Some of those, however, don't go all day long. So when you talk about universal, you have to talk about childcare that is appropriate for parents who are working. Many challenges. You also have to figure out where there's a workforce situation, what are the hours, public-private partnership, that could be part of it. So many people I know have different shifts, so the childcare that exists doesn't work for them. This whole challenge has to be thought out as we're talking about workforce. So the hope is there, task forces wanting universal, but it has to be thought out not only about we want it, but what's the space? What's the public-private partnership? And how in the world are the agencies going to participate? And it has to be the right hours, just to start with. And it has to be the right hours, just to start with.
Yeah, and, and thank you for that. I think that's, that's exactly it. It is setting the foundation and aiming us towards it. But I think this too encourages the conversation of what does the future of work look like? You know, how do we make sure our work is hybrid or has a remote option? How do we even make sure our workspaces are conducive to parents or mothers or people with children? You know, in the, in the city council, for example, I had a friend visit with, visit me at a state-of-day with her baby. Not a single bathroom in City Hall had a changing table, right? Like, that's concerning for an all-women council, primarily right now, but also because it's a building that has women and potentially children in it sometimes. So really, you know, childcare is how we end a, a lot of the disparities for primarily women, but also families. And I think this is a really good head start. I, I think it's also encouraging that we have a women-led body right now that can follow this through. We have someone leading on oversight, who will make sure that the task forces give us the data, and we follow up on what that means. And then I think what we need to look at in the future are different funding opportunities to make childcare vendors or childcare spaces give the opportunity to be more affordable to the average person that would like to utilize them. So I think that's the next step moving forward.
And if we could, and I don't want to put you guys on the spot too much, but, you know, we, we're hearing about.
Yes, you do.
We're, we're hearing about universal pre-K, universal three, uh, three-K, now, universal childcare. Are there any places in the budget in the years ahead that we're gonna be okay with maybe downsizing or cutting to make room for these programs? Because these are gonna be expensive and, and very important programs, if they're gonna serve everyone in New York City. Is there, is there anywhere?
I mean, I, I think, yes, I think generally, there probably is lots of money within a budget where we can reduce spending or reduce expenses, or find better ways to spend, that can be more economically savvy in how we use our budgets and tax dollars. I don't primarily want to highlight a specific space, because I don't know of any off the top of my head, but I'm sure Gail. Gail has suggestions.
Units of appropriation. You should know that word. U of A is the most important budget word. And what that means is, you could have Department of Homeless, I'm just making this up, ten million dollars. It doesn't say one word as to what is in that ten million dollars. To the credit of Jim Karas, who's a longtime, one of the general councils in the city council, this year, he got seven units of appropriations delineated at the police department. Now, that might, might make sense, like, what's the big deal? It's a big deal. Because then you know what is in, what's going in in terms of technology, what's going in in terms of detective, et cetera. So what I'm saying is, the way to do the cut in the budget is to make these darn agencies give their units of appropriation and not give us a twenty-million-dollar, this is for other. That is where you cut the budget.
I think that's the perfect way to end this wonderful discussion. So thank you very much, Councilwoman Brewer.
Councilwoman Farias.
Thank you.